Noelle Sniffles. All right, it looks like we're on.
Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call to order the September 27th City of Daly City Recreation Commission. If you could all please stand and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
You may have a roll call. Commissioner O'Riot.
Here.
Commissioner Progno.
Here.
Vice Chair Pastor.
Here.
And Chair Kelly.
Here. We are missing one this evening. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve the minutes of August 23rd?
I'd like to enter a motion to approve the August 23rd minutes.
August 23rd.
August 23rd?
Oh.
Yeah.
I thought you said 25th, I'm sorry.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Curran and Mr. Zett.
It is my pleasure this evening, Madam Chair, to bring to you David Zetzer, who's going to give us an overview of our highly successful summer youth recreation program that ended right before school started and appropriate. We're officially out of summer now, we can all collectively take a sigh and a deep breath and look back on what we did. So, take it away, David. Well.
Well, we have a slight technical difficulty. We received copies of the presentation for our review.
I saw it on when we--
It was on.
It was on.
Be a moment.
There it goes. It's coming up.
I didn't fall asleep. Again, my name is David Zetzer, Recreation Program Supervisor over the Summer Youth Recreation Program. I'm going to be reviewing the program that ran for 10 weeks, each week having its own theme, related field trips, crafts projects, food feasting games. We started our summer at five locations, Marchbank Park, Geller Park, Westmore Park, Hillside Park, and Westlake. This year, we added two new weeks to the program, bonus weeks. Bonus Week 1 being at Geller Park, which also served as a hands-on training for new staff and old staff, and for some of our VLPs. The Bonus Week 1 took a field trip to the Children's Creative Museum and was a great chance for the participants to take potions class, herbology, play Quidditch, had feasts, find dragon eggs, and even drink butter beer. For Bonus Week 2, at Marchbank Park and Westlake Park, we repeated most of the same projects, gave them a little twist and spin so they were slightly different. But for the field trip, we went on a tour of the Ferry Building, Pier 39, Fisherman's Wharf, rode the Carousel, 70 Experience, and as well as going to the Mech Museum. Here's photos from Week 1, Bonus Week 1. And this is one of the videos from the Children's Creative Museum. I guess it doesn't play. But we had a chance for the kids to do stop, action, animation. Maybe.
There it is.
So the kids got a chance to actually make the creations and move all the pieces, press stop and start on the camera, and change the backgrounds, as well as decide what the story is and the characters. It was a pretty fun experience. The staff there is really great and helpful and great for groups to go. We're definitely going to do it again next summer.
Like Gumby.
And these are some photos from Week 2, or Bonus Week 2. Bonus Week 2 also gave us a chance to launch our first family movie in the park. Family joined us to watch The Chronicles of Narnia and The Lion Witch and the Wardrobe.
Can you tell me how many people showed up for that?
It was maybe around six or seven families. It wasn't very highly attended, but the weather was also true Daly City, super foggy and wet. It was summer in Daly City, so bring your raincoats for movies in the park.
That'll be great. I've attended the one in South City and it really will grow, so I look forward to it.
Week 1 is Summer Blast Off. 286 participants in Daly City this week bought the best of the geek world out, in our staff and our kids. The week is based in space, tech, science, and other fun activities. We visited the San Jose Tech Museum and got our Galaxy on at both Classic Bowl and Brentwood Bowl. Week 2 Dive Into Summer had 293 participants. Many undersea adventures this week with the theme of water oceans and beaches. Food crafts like sandy beach cupcakes, Jell-O aquariums, and other nom-nom goodies could be caught if you visited some of the sites. We did see Finding Dory on the big screen at the Century Theater in Daly City. This week also hosted our annual pool party and water fight at Giamonopool. Week 3 All-American Summer, 295 participants. With all the upcoming 4th of July holiday activities, this week was based in red, white, and blue. Crafts like paper rockets, Junior Giant baseball, and onsite barbecue parties with hot dogs, hamburgers, and more. We made sure to have a fun time at Golden Gate Park with a nice walk starting from Stowe Lake and finishing at the Corret Children's Playground Quarter with a ride on that famous carousel. For the first time in years, we also took a trip to the San Francisco Giants on a nighttime adventure. It was a fun evening. Week 4 A Super Summer had 265 participants. This is a short week due to the 4th of July holiday. This week really leaped over tall buildings as the theme was superheroes. Kids made their own capes and hero creations. We adventured at Pump It Up in San Francisco and even had a glow-in-the-dark party there. This week was also our Challenge of the Parks, where all five sites compete in games and activities verse each other, like relay races, dance competitions, and a basketball shootout. Geller Park is the 2016 winner. Week 5 Smore Summer, 269 participants. Who wouldn't like a smore summer? This is our Outdoor Adventure Week. Kids learned how to tie-dye, about fire safety, and how to even make a smore. We had three adventures this week. We had a fun hike and picnic through San Bruno Mountain, a great swim trip to Coal Canyon in the East Bay, and an overnight camping trip in the Westlake Gym with a real bonfire outside. Week 6 Summer of the Stars, 293 participants. Daly City sure does have talent this week. It showcased all of the different talents with the kids dancing, singing, and doing other such performing arts onsite. This week, we did help take over the entire Century Daily, Century Theater in Daly City to view the movie Pets. We also visited the ice skating rink at the Yerba Buena Gardens. The award-winning moment of that week was the 26 acts that performed in our annual SYRP Talent Show. Complete with a photo op when the kids got offstage and their own trophies. Week 7 A Wild Summer had 288 participants. This week sure was wild, it was a fun week. The animal themes included animals, making fossils, some worldly foods and crafts. We wanted to originally have a bonfire at Ocean Beach, but it was a spare-the-air day, so the photo that you're seeing is actually from a bonfire later in another week. The kids got a chance to go to the beach after doing a hike starting in Land's End, and it was a fun time for the kids that attended. We also went to the Oakland Zoo and had an excellent experience. Week 8 is our Summer Carnival, 272 participants. This is what used to be our end-of-the-summer week before the bonus weeks got added, so we finished the week with a carnival onsite, had face painting. Each site, however, still did their own activities, as well as had their own end-of-the-summer parties, balloon animals, and a jump house onsite. One of the crowning moments of that week is the carnival. Here's some photos. There are carnival games, prizes, food, popsicles, fun for everybody. It's open to the general public on that day, as well as other camps and programs that the city has. And this is from our photo booth. Included in the Summer Youth Recreation Program is also the Volunteen Leadership Program. The Volunteen Leadership Program had 119 registered participants with over 17,000 hours of community service in the five locations. The program, the SYRP program, wouldn't be as successful if we didn't have these fabulous teens that come and give up their summer and volunteer with us. And finally, as part of the Summer Youth Recreation Program, we do have the Junior Giants Program. The Junior Giant Program has three leagues: T-Ball Division for 5- and 6-year-olds with 90 participants, Black Division for 7- and 9-year-olds with 90 participants, Orange Division for 10- to 13-year-olds with 120 participants. The first pitch meeting had over 500 families in attendance. 120 families signed up that evening for the Daly City Library's Summer Reading Program, and over 200 free books were given away to them as well. That will conclude my presentation for the Summer Youth Recreation Program.
Very successful summer. I want to be a kid and go the whole time and not work. That would be so much fun. So much fun.
And I would--
I think you would drive the volunteers.
I would certainly like to thank David, too, for, you know, it is eight, 10 weeks of total chaos, but everyone is having a good time.
And I appreciate his creativity, too, in coordinating the planning and keeping the kids occupied for that long a period of time. It's pretty tough.
The staff deserves the credit as well.
Well, you coordinated, and please share the congratulations with all of them.
I will, thank you.
And the volunteers. Congratulations, yeah. Because I also ran a summer program, I know how difficult that is, so congratulations to you and the staff.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you very much.
Through the chair, I'm very impressed on how the various sites that you took them to, like to get acquainted with our neighbors north of us in San Francisco, Land's End, and what have you, and just have them explore and enjoy the day, whether it might have been foggy or not, but that's a great experience for those ages. So, thank you, David, and the group.
No, it was, there were a couple of times that you'd drive up John Daly Boulevard and you'd see just mass of children.
Oh, yeah.
There they go.
That's great.
And one other thing I do want to point out, that we focused on the Summer Youth Recreation Program with a little bit of Junior Giants at the end. There's also all the other specialty camps that take place. There was basketball camp, and volleyball camp, and theater camp.
All-sports camp.
All-sports camp, cheerleading camp.
Aqua camp.
Aqua camps. So, we were keeping a lot of kids engaged over the summer, including a couple related to me. So, it's a good, still an incredible value for what the kids get.
And I imagine plans are already underway for next summer?
Halfway done. We're halfway done.
It never stops.
I also presented each of you with one of the summer shirts from this summer, and a superhero cape of your variation.
Wow, ooh. Thank you.
And you saw, the graphics on the shirt, along with the graphics that were shown in the PowerPoint presentation, are hand-drawn by one of our staff members who--
Really?
Worked that all up under, I think, David's creative supervision, but the kids loved the shirts. In fact, I had a parent talking about summer camp at the beginning of the school year, and he was saying his son was there, and he said, "He liked, he liked summer camp, but he loves that shirt. He always wants to wear the same shirt over and over."
I actually attended JS yesterday during their early release day, and there were two kids wearing their Summer Youth Rec shirts.
Oh, really?
Each of the five sites had their own color, so red, Marchbanks, orange, Geller, yellow was Westmore, green, Hillside, and blue was Westlake. And then two bonus shirts, those are bonus shirts for people who attended the Space Week, and then we have another one for the tie-dye. So they're special shirts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
The drawing is so well done.
She's got it on right away.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks for this colorful presentation, too, that we have here. Thank you.
We'll use this. I know. Before you know it.
Got something to compete with my grandkids on on Halloween.
Okay, moving along, we have a discussion about our friendly coyotes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is on our agenda tonight, just for a discussion and for everybody's information. Those who've lived in Daly City for a long time know that we are surrounded by nature with San Bruno Mountain, Lake Merced, and the golf courses sort of buffering around our perimeter. Coyotes have been with us for a long time, and there was an issue, I'm thinking eight years ago or so, at Muscle Rock, there was an increase in coyote activity, and some of the residents got together there and put up some big signs and, you know, warned people that we're walking dogs, especially small dogs, and especially dogs off-leash were getting into little confrontations. And then it was quiet. We didn't hear a lot about coyotes, and in fact, in all of my years in the Department of Library and Recreation Services, up until today, I've had a total of zero coyote-related complaints. Not that we don't get lots of other complaints, but none about coyotes. A week and a half ago or so, in fact, Vivian O'Riot was in my office when Tara Moriarty from KTVU showed up, and evidently there was three coyotes encountered a off-leash dog at the dual site and got a little rough. So, that made the news a week ago Friday. And so it sort of heightened our awareness, like I said, we hadn't actually gotten complaints, but there's some great resources out there, and I wanted, first of all, in case, you know, as representatives of the Recreation Commission, if you're approached by members of the community, one of the first questions people are going to ask is, "Well, what are you going to do about it?" And the sad reality is, you know, we will coexist with the wildlife in Daly City, like we have. Daly City doesn't have its own animal control department, certainly not within recreation or libraries. We battle rodents now and then in libraries, but coyotes and raccoons and skunks and possums and squirrels, you know, they're here at City Hall. We've got families of skunks here, outside, not inside. So, our best course of action is really providing information to the community, especially those in the affected areas, and it appears there's been an increase in coyote activity within the last couple of months, actually going back to May, evidently, especially around the golf courses in the north end of town. I've not seen any coyotes in Westlake Park for quite a few years, maybe, you might have been around. We had one maybe three years ago that appeared at dusk when no one was in the park. Other than that, we haven't had any coyote sightings that I am aware of in any Daly City parks, other than the recent sightings at the dual site. I will add that, just as a reminder to Daly City residents, and this commission knows because you vetted the ordinance that went before the council about a year ago, dogs must be on leashes in Daly City parks, and the leash may not exceed six feet. There's a reason for that. We have far more dog-on-child incidences reported than coyote-on-dog. And we've, even in Westlake Park, within the last year, we had a three-year-old girl that was attacked by a dog and ended up in the emergency room with a bunch of stitches to her face, so it's a serious matter. And new signs went up this year reminding pet owners, dog owners especially, that dogs are permitted in Daly City parks, but they must be on a leash. The two exceptions are the dog parks at Palisades and Mission Hills. They're too small off-leash dog areas, but Geller Park, Westlake, Marchbank, Hillside, all the other parks in Daly City where you see dogs running off-leash, they really should be on leash. And in the case of the dual site, there are, have been signs up there for a while, warning of the presence of coyotes and reminding people again to keep the dogs on leash, but evidently a couple of weeks ago, there was a dog off-leash that did have the encounter with a coyote, so. The other thing, we had, back in April, there was a summit, a coyote summit, again, mostly a lot of interest in the Muscle Rock part of the city, and fishing game was there, and they're going to say the same thing that we've been saying over and over, not that we're coyote experts, but please, if you have outdoor pets, keep pet food inside, if at all possible, because the coyotes and the skunks and the raccoons and, you know, they'll keep coming back if there's a food source. So, you know, if you make it comfortable for them, they're not going to go away. And the other thing is to be really careful, especially with small dogs in those areas where we know there are coyotes. Keep them on a leash, keep them within your sight, and the same goes for small children. We have had zero reports, I confirmed this with the police, zero reports of any coyote complaints at all to the police department, but zero attacks on children, and it's an extremely rare occurrence, and more likely to have a raccoon attack a small child than a coyote. With that said, I did pass out some information, so you're all aware, that sort of the best practice is, there's a wonderful organization called Project Coyote that maintains a resource, videos and pamphlets and flyers, and really, there's lots of words on there, but the underlying theme is, you know, the coyotes are here and we're not going to eradicate them, we're not going to put birth control out there, which was one of the suggestions. We're going to try to coexist and be smart about it, you know, not leave food unattended in the backyards and keeping an eye on children and pets. With that said, we do have a guest in the audience today, and I think it would be great if she would be willing to come share her story through the chair.
I'm living near a golf course. I do see coyotes in my yard, and I just kind of figure, I'll leave him alone, he'll leave me alone.
I'm sure you hear them at night, too.
Not so much, but, you know. But I do see on Nextdoor that there are quite a few people in my neighborhood and in Broadmoor that have been posting sightings, so.
Through the chair, just since we're speaking on coyotes, five months ago, there was a coyote presence in the Common area, in the Cerro Monte neighborhood, in the Common area that's kind of like between the Geller houses and the Hampshire Avenue houses, and the neighborhood cat chased it out, chased it away. But it was just a furrow cat that was up there that just didn't want it near its own space. So, they were playing kind of like chase-the-tail type thing around, but then the coyote found its way out, outside the area. But that was about five months ago, and that's about the only last time I saw a coyote up there in Cerro Monte neighborhood.
Yeah, they're certainly all around, in San Bruno Mountain and around the golf courses, but I had not heard of a coyote in the Cerro Monte neighborhood.
Well, I mean, you know, you get the skunks and the possums and the raccoons and--
There's lots of food out there.
Well, there's a lot of people--
One theory I read was because of the rain that we had this year, there was more food for the little rodents, and up the food chain, everybody ate well and had a good breeding season, so that might be part of it.
Well, and in my neighborhood, too, there's quite a few people that feed the feral cats, and so that brings all kinds of things, too.
Anyway, through the chair, I would love to invite Paula Barren to share her story, a good cautionary tale for those of you living near golf courses and open space.
Excuse me, would you could please come up to the microphone?
They can't hear you.
You have a live TV audience.
And then when you're finished, you think there's speaker cards, if you fill that out for the record, please. Okay, perfect. I've noticed the squirrels have started coming back because they've been gone for quite a while. The cats, there's a lot of missing cats, and my particular story was, I live on the golf course on Wilshire, and we have a six-foot fence outside, and this dog has always been able to go in and out, and not a problem. And I came home about four months ago and called her in, and her neck was completely bloodied, nine puncture holes. Got her up to the emergency on Juniper Sarah and had to leave her overnight, and they just, they were so amazed that they didn't cut her jugular, because that's what they go for, they go for breaking the neck. So, it's been quite a journey, and we still can't figure out how it happened, because a six-foot fence is a six-foot fence. Now it's an eight-foot fence, and I had not really seen them, so I wasn't really geared for protecting or being concerned or afraid, terrified at this moment, and now I watch a pack of six of them. And at night, it is like living in the killing fields. It's horrendous. They've got something out there, I don't know if, what breed, or if it's certainly not dogs, but it sounds more like more cats and things, and it's just been very, it's been so frustrating. It was $4,000 of my money to have this all taken care of, which I would pay 14. This is, this is my baby. And we've had, as a backstory, we've had a really big year because she was found to have a cancerous tumor on her spine, so we went down to Sage and did the radiation, so she's one tough little Australian bugger, that's all I'm going to say. This is just, you know, it's so, to be encroached upon in your home like that, it's like being robbed, it's like being raped. It's so defiling, and the fear then is, now I don't let her go out in the backyard without me, and she's a, you know, she's a, they're ratters, so she's a runner, she loves to play ball, and I take her to the beach, I'll walk her up and down. A lot of times at night, we will run to the corner because outside it's safe, and I've got her on a leash, so I get her at least some exercise, but it just has so significantly changed how you live your life and your fear level, my fear level, and I have post-traumatic stress at the moment, which was prior to this, didn't help. But your ability to always be on guard and always aware, and I am the daughter of a San Francisco fireman, so I grew up with that, and now to have it be outside my bedroom window is very different. And I've talked to the ASPCA, I've talked to a lot of people, and what they always will tell you is that it's a protected species and that nobody can help you. And I guess my frustration is, I thought I had a protected species in her own yard, and she ended up being so not. And so, the killing keeps going on. They seem to have gone further down, they must have cleaned out our area, but, you know, to see one, and then to see two, and over a period, I wish I had like time-lapse photography, and then to see six, that's a big crew of coyotes walking down the back of the rough in the golf course. I mean, that's, that's pretty heavy duty. I don't think most people have that experience. So when I heard about the situation down at the Broderick and Terry Monument, because my cousin and I had been down there a couple of months ago, because that's where we used to go when we were kids, we would walk down the street and, you know, just kind of go, "This is pretty cool." But we had no idea, that was before this incident, that there was anything around, you know, there was no signs at that time, because that was probably, could have been nine months ago, so. I think the signposting is a really good idea. I think that people being told that they're there and that really watch your animals, people with cats are going to have a much different, a much harder time, I think, because cats do-- going to have a much different, a much harder time, I think, because cats do what cats want. This one's pretty easy, and, you know, it's just, it's, I think the hardest part is you just feel so helpless. You just feel like you can't, it would be like you can't protect your child, you know? You send them to a school, and they walk three blocks away, and they come home and they've been beaten up. And I think that's probably the difficult piece, and that she can't run and be free. That's very hard. We had her, I lived in Australia, and that's where I got her, and we were on Three Acres, so she just ran. She's a runner. And now she's a just, she's a fast walker. Anyway, I just thought it was worth it. Oh, and I wanted to say about the banging of the cans and the, yes, shooing, get out of here. I have kind of a different thing that I use. Mine is, get out of here, you rotten sons of bitches. Right over the back fence, and the neighbor next door comes down, you'll go. So, yes, it's, when it's yours, it's excruciatingly personal. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you for this, because I think that, you know, it's, it is what it is. And like I was telling earlier, I have a girlfriend that was walking down her street in Ingleside Terrace and looks across the street, and there's a coyote walking down the street. And there's somebody that's left the baby outside in the, in her stroller while she ran in the house, and I'm like, oh, my God. But the coyote walked right past the children. Doesn't seem to be, I mean, I haven't heard of a lot of stories of that, but the animals, yeah. So.
Thank you for sharing your story with us.
Well, thank you for listening.
We hope that stays healthy.
Yeah, she's-
And through the chair, I thought, can you, is she too heavy for you to pick up so the camera can see?
Oh, no. Here you go.
Hey, baby.
Hello.
Hi.
She needs a grooming, but-
Oh, so cute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
Do we have anything under our commission?
Just through the chair, you know, I'm still on the subject of the dogs and coyotes. You know, with the remaining events that we're having in Daly City, that maybe some of these extra flyers can be at least brought to those events just to raise the awareness. And maybe as we go into different events into 2017, maybe an information table of the coyote message be brought out, since it's a co-existent atmosphere that we're going to be going through, at least we get the awareness out there.
And through the chair, I would say, I'm just going to ask, are these going to be at the libraries and, well, you know, at least on the posters or?
Honestly, I brought them, I brought them for your benefit, but I think, yeah, that's probably something worth pursuing.
And I'll take a couple and hang them at my, a couple Starbucks that might be helpful to us.
And I maybe suggest to you that, obviously, this is too much to put on, but maybe some of the bullet points on Channel 27 would be helpful too.
And you know, my memory's not great, but I think we did indeed do that back when they were an issue at Muscle Rock.
Yeah.
That seems to have died down, you know. The food supply is what attracts them, and if you recall, there was a huge feral cat population at the beach at Muscle Rock.
There still is in my neighborhoods.
Well, not so much at Muscle Rock, I think.
Because it's closed now, right?
Well, just wait, the dogs are coming. I mean, the coyotes are coming. They're just making the way.
Well, and one of the things I notice too with the coyotes is they go under the fence.
Yes.
They don't go over the fence, they go under, so-
That's exactly right.
We have gone down into the ground with the fence.
Oh, wow.
Because I thought I had-
Skunks do it too.
So, thank you. That's what, it was mounds against me.
Skunks and coyotes go under.
I got a repair of-
All right, yes, we can, we can do both of those things.
Okay, thank you.
That's awesome.
Great, thank you.
So, we're just asking, I was just going to say that the Dolger Senior Center had a, for their members and volunteers, they had a beautiful event on Thursday, and there were four people recognized. I don't have them in front of me, Donna Pineda, Kathy Everly, Tony Zidich, and I'm forgetting-
Connie Ospina.
Connie Ospina. Yeah, so the four of them were honored, and lovely event. That's all I was going to say.
Well, through the chair. So, I just received word, now I'm going to talk about the Filipino-American History Month, and I've been working with Director Curran on some aspects of it. But I just received word today, and I think this is worth sharing, that this particular event is going to be promoted quite heavily on television, at least on the Filipino channel, which is showing quite a bit of support for this event. And I'm told that it is going to be showing from October 1 to 8 at five times a day, so that's forty times from October 1 to 8, and that's at a value of about fourteen thousand dollars. So, I just wanted to note that this particular event is going to receive quite a bit of attention, not just locally, but nationally as well. So, we're very happy to have that.
Yeah, thanks for sharing.
For the merrier.
Yep.
Announcements?
Yeah, we can zip through these real quick. Coming up on Sunday, October 2nd, our very favorite Pancake Breakfast, the Fall Festival at the Dolger Senior Center, again, put on by the supporters of the Dolger Senior Center, Inc., a 501(c)(3) nonprofit group that helps so much in the support and operations of the Dolger Senior Center.
I got my ticket.
I got my ticket. It's a, it's a full day. Commissioner Arayo just shared about the Phil Am History Month celebration coming up on Saturday, October 8th, at the Pacelli Gym. There will be all sorts of fun entertainment throughout the day and bring an appetite, because there'll be three food trucks out front and lots of food to go around. And on Friday, October 21st, you should have one of these in front of you. It's the Family Movie Night in the Park.
Nice.
So, you've gone to South Cities, come to Daly Cities. It will be Friday, October 21, Westlake Park, from 6 to 8, and the screening will be the movie Hocus Pocus with Bette Midler and Sarah Jessica Parker and people, and David's going to talk about what the trunk-or-treat means.
I love that concept.
So, we're going to have the Family Movie Night, and we thought we should add another fun element to it. At the same time, a couple people approached us and said, hey, what about doing a trunk-or-treat? So, we're going to have a trunk-or-treat event, which is a car decorating contest for grownups, but it will be a trick-or-treating event, a safe haven trick-or-treating event where you can go from car to car and collect sweet treats, goodies, candy, toys, or whatever the person is. More information will be released on the Instagram webpage in the next week about how to get involved with the trunk-or-treat, as well as posted on our Facebook and through other social outlets. It's our first time doing it. People who want to participate, it will begin at 6:00, and if a person is participating in decorating, they need to arrive early so we can check all their goodies and make sure they're good and safe.
Well, and we'll get more than six families.
And lastly, coming up Friday, October 28th, we'll have another meeting between now and then, but wanted to put a plug in in advance for the haunted pool. If you haven't been, they go over the top. If you're familiar with the layout of the GeoMona Pool, they take the classroom and make it into a haunted maze, and they go all out. They're already, they're already working on it for this year, and I was there last year, it was pretty spectacular. Plus, it's a great family outing to hang out in the pool and splash around and have a good time. Friday, October 28th, starting at 6:30. That's it.
Okay, thank you, and we have had our public comment, so no one else here, so I would like a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting, please.
I can enter the motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
Second.
I'd like to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the t-shirt and cape.